Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the for Wednesday, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Commissioner Whitton?
Present.
Commissioner and Chair Vice Chair Waidilla?
He will not be here this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Mamoni?
Present.
Commissioner Brickett? Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Chair Stephenson?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Hey, we have quorum, and this time we will do pledge allegiance and Mr. Daniel will be leading this.
And for folks at home, don't worry about saying it, we'll get it here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Did we receive any comments from the public for tonight's meeting?
Only on the agenda items.
Okay. And is there anyone on the call wishing to speak to the planning commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Take that as known. Okay, and did everyone receive a copy of the minutes from the April fourteenth meeting? And we'll start with you, Commissioner Wilcox.
And Mr. Wilcox did email staff his suggested comments to Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Wilcox, would you like for us to just pull that up so you can read from that?
Uh, well, I have a paper copy in front of me, but the benefit of other people on the call, probably easier if you could display it. So everyone's not flipping through the pages.
Okay, give me one moment. All right, Mr. Wilcox, it's on.
I'm just trying to get her this box in the corner. Okay, there we go. Got quite a few, actually, or maybe it just looks like a lot because I'm printed big on my paper sheet. But I hope it's not, I hope I don't get too tedious going through this. Um, okay, as you can see on page two, paragraph three, I highlighted definitions that exist that weren't defined. And that's kind of a confusing, praising to me to have undefined definitions. So maybe you could just drop, drop that entire section and just say, definitions that need to be defined, or need to be better defined, rather. And on page three, paragraph one, I highlighted sixty thousand, sixty thousand feet. Change that to sixty thousand square feet. And there's a reference in line three that says, that could be expanded at their own risk, since it could not attract community uses. Wasn't clear what's, was that referring to or who that's referring to? Maybe, I think that was a quote from Chris, if you can clarify that, maybe.
I, I think it's, it's more that if you wanted to increase that sixty thousand square feet, do it at your risk, at your own risk, because you might get something that you can't then turn down in case you didn't want it. I don't know how truly important it is for the context of the minutes, but that was, I think, the intent there.
Okay. So that, so that would be the commission or the city putting themselves at risk?
It would be the city, yeah. The city wanted to have a certain scale of development. If you exceed sixty thousand per feet, you open your, maybe getting something there that you don't want.
Okay.
That could be expanded, but could attract community uses. They might rather not see.
Okay. Page three, paragraph two, third line, the word height should be area or footprint.
Correct.
And again, on sixty thousand feet, should be sixty thousand square feet, third line from the bottom. Page four, paragraph one. I just changed the word about halfway into the paragraph, changed the word, ran an S, and added an S to the words surrounding. Page four, paragraph four. I was actually, I was, I was asking about distinction between townhouses versus quadplexes. And I wasn't clear on the explanation, actually. I think, Chris, you said quadplex was on individual lots, but some, the quadplexes that I'm familiar with are actually more commonly two up and two down. So they'd actually share the ground there, thereon. So that was kind of confusing. So I don't know. That needs to be clarified, since it was, it's probably fairly accurately reported in the minutes.
To your, to your point, Mr. Wilcox, that is also another way of quadplex can be like, like, imagine a double stacked duplex could be considered a quadplex. What we don't have right now is a clear definition from the state. The state is writing the model code. That'll give us definitions for thousand type all, but we would use whatever definition. And it provides here probably within the next month or two, honestly. I think we have a draft of what they're going to do, and that's what will go ultimately into the draft that you guys will have at your hearing when you consider this zoning amendment.
Oh, okay.
It could be side by side, or it could be two up, two down. Like you were saying, it could even be one up, three down, or three up, one down. So they'll find a definition. I, I hope that's all encompassing.
Okay, I'll, I'll be looking for that. Page five, paragraph one. Chair Stephenson asked if this property would represent a significant amount of the additional amount of land. I think it'd be worth specifying that he's, Chair Stephenson is referring to the, the Confluence site. Okay, moving along, page five, paragraph three. Again, we've got square footage missing the word square. Page five, paragraph five. Highlighted the sentence, also in the spring and summer, there will be construction impacting Halsey and I eighty-four. I didn't, didn't understand what that meant. Is that just mean summer is construction season? Or is there something expected on those two arterials?
I think more that that's typical construction season for that type of structure.
Okay, I thought that's my, might, might be what it was. Okay, page five, paragraph seven. Let's see. The reference to Concert at Halsey Street. I think I s- I think when I was referring to that, I was talking about Edgefield. So it might be better to say Concert at Edgefield rather than at Halsey Street. Okay, page six, paragraph four, line four, I'd capitalized Confluence. And also about halfway down the paragraph, it says, drive though, rather than drive through. That, that happens in some other places also, where the R is dropped from the word. Page seven, paragraph one. Looks like the word. Let's see. Okay. Yeah, there's another drive, drive though, that should be drive through. And we're missing a period at the end of that paragraph. Page eight. Five thousand feet. Change to five thousand square feet. Now midway in the paragraph, the word objectionable should be objective, I think. And toward the bottom of the paragraph, the second line from the bottom, I think traction should be maybe congestion. Wasn't sure what was, what was intended there. Does that make sense to change that to congestion? Hey, we're getting close. Page, yeah, we're actually near the end, last page. Under who, who made the motion to adjourn was Ms. Prickett or Commissioner Prickett and Commissioner Waidilla, rather than Mr. Wilcox. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Wilcox, I think right above that, where you had highlighted workshop, would that be meeting instead of workshop? Mr. Wilcox?
I'm guessing.
Yeah, I, I just, I just muted myself. Yeah, you're, you're correct. I missed that one. Thanks, Chris.
I believe Commissioner Prickett is entering the meeting now for the record.
Okay, any other corrections to the minutes from April fourteenth? If not, motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the minutes of April fourteen, twenty twenty-one as amended.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve meeting minutes from April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Askmen, if all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Look, that carried. Sorry I'm late. You are fine. Good to see you. Okay. The matters for tonight's meeting are case file LU zero 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 seven two zero two one, Sturgeon Electric, and case file seven one dash zero one, Housing Needs Analysis Adoption. And before we, we start this evening, I'd like to explain a little bit about the planning commission and the procedure that will be following tonight. The planning commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale City. Members of the planning commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The planning commission serves as the citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the planning commission consider include uses of land, subdivision, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the planning commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they simply are making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Tonight's application, Sturgeon Electric is type three. The planning commission will be the deciding body on that. And for case file seven one zero one, it's a type four application, and the city council will be the deciding body on that. And as far as procedures go, quasi judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The planning commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the planning commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission must grant requests by either continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the planning commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. As a final note, public hearings are recorded. Therefore, if you wish to speak, I would like you to say your name and your address for the record. And basically have one opportunity to speak throughout the public hearing. Okay, and before we open the public hearing, does any member of the planning commission have any ex parte contact other than driving by the site? Our bias to declare? Okay, hearing none. We will go ahead then and open the case file LU zero 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 seven dash two zero two one, Sturgeon Electric Fence Type Three Application.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'll be handling the presentation tonight. I will, if needed, get some assistance from Marini, who's also on the call. Marini did, I do want to acknowledge, Marini did a lot of the work in preparation for this hearing, and I want to thank her for the efforts. Just in the event, we have some technical difficulties like we did two weeks ago, that's why I'll be presenting tonight. But I may defer to Marini, or we will defer to the applicant, if there are questions that staff is unable to answer right off the bat. Want to confirm at home, if you guys can see a PowerPoint presentation, you should say LU double oh seven or triple oh seven. All right, this is a Sturgeon Electric Fence. It is a type three procedure tonight. And as the chair, oops, mentioned, sorry, I'm having trouble advancing the slide. There we go. This is a type three hearing that you folks are the deciding entity tonight. Property is located in the industrial area just to the east, and you can actually see the runway and the, the threshold of the runway on this image, just to the east of Troutdale Airport. Sandy River is there on the right side of the image. It is across the street from a one-story kind of long industrial building. And Sturgeon Electric's had a presence in this location for some time. It is hugged up right against the levee in that area where the trail is. And immediately to the south of the water treatment plant. It is zone industrial, general industrial. It is classified as industrial. And open space is, exists to the east and south, and then industrial uses obviously to the north and the west. You've probably been by the property before. This is what, what property looks like from the street view image. Typical industrials, smaller industrial site in, in the city. There are three things that are effectively being requested tonight. The most important one is probably the special variance, and that is to allow for the installation of an electric fence that is ten feet tall behind the property's existing seven-foot-tall chain link fence. The issue we have, though, is according to typical Troutdale Development Code standards, no electric fences shall be constructed or maintained within the city limits. That has been a prevailing standard that has existed for a number of years for the city. In addition to the special variance, there's also a, what we call a standard variance, also being required, since it's located within the front setback of the property. So the code refers that any fences that are located in industrial zones should not be three and a half feet high if located within a front setback. That's typically because of fire department visibility requirements. So there is also a request to allow for a taller fence. And that exceeds the threshold that, that is normally acceptable. So you have two variance applications which you are able to compartmentalize as you consider this application. Finally, there is a site development review component of it. That is actually the more straightforward of the three, three applications tied into one that is being sought for approval. That's for the fences placement on the property. What's not being requested is a change to the development code, change to the map, anything of that nature. These are two variance requests and a site development review which got rounded into this overall request. Here are the applicable criteria. It is largely based on development code standards and just those prevailing sections. The review tonight is, again, a, we're in a hearing, so quasi judicial procedure. You are the decision-making entity, and if there is an appeal to the decision from an agreed party, it can go to city council for further consideration. We've been in contact with Sturgeon Electric basically since the start of the year. We had a pre-application meeting with them in January. They submitted materials late March. We deemed them complete in early April, and we've scheduled the hearing for tonight. If you move forward with an approval, the applicant has some building permit obligations and would have to contact our department to get any relevant permits. It is a pretty limited application, since it's really insular, and we're talking about site improvements at the end of the day. So planning, building, and public works really the only three entities. No other major entities really needed to be engaged with. We will talk about the summary of comments a little bit into where we go into the decision criteria. So I'll, I'll expand upon what you see there on the right side of your column. A very simple analysis, and I think the motivation, but we'll let the applicant speak to that, then it seems like the primary motivation of this application is security. Site security, which has been very difficult, not just for this property, but for a number of industrial and, and non-residential properties across the city, particularly as we've seen an uptick in vagrancy and other issues. So in no way do we want to suggest or infer otherwise that there are legitimate reasons as to why this application is being sought and why potentially a taller and electrified fence might be considered. Situation that we have, though, is we do have some concerns, and there were reasons as to why the city has historically prohibited electric fencing. There are some concerns about potential for wildlife impacts that might be immediately adjacent to the property. But more, maybe more pressing for this group to consider is if you are setting a true precedent by allowing a variance application to suggest that this is a special or unique circumstance. And that's where we'll, we'll go into our, our decision criteria and, and to kind of go through that and why staff is arriving at the recommendation that it is. So again, there are three, three applications in one. There's the site development review, which we're going to cover first. We then have the standard variance, which is talking about the, the height of the fence, whether that's appropriate. And then finally, the special variance section, which covers the electrified, the, the desire to have an electrified fence. So on the site development review for staff, it is a pretty straightforward application. So we'll go through these criteria, and remember, all of the criteria in one particular have to be satisfied in order for that portion of the application to be approvable. So for site development review, does the application comply with all the applicable provisions of the underlying zone? Putting the yard setbacks, lot area dimensions, density, and so forth. One of the things, again, this is an existing established property. It has been sighted well. It does not have any real impacts onto adjacent natural constraint properties. It's been developed accordingly. Proposed fence itself is going to be positioned behind existing development. There is an existing perimeter fence. And really, it doesn't fundamentally change the characteristics of the site or impact the site's surroundings. So we believe the criterion is met here for this application. The proposal includes required upgrades, if any, to existing development that does not comply with it. Are there any non-conformities on the site? Right now, again, there are the front yard setbacks. The existing fence is seven feet tall. The proposed fence that is being sought would be behind the existing fence. It does not expand the non-conformity, which is the seven-foot-tall front setback fence. So even though that is a non-conforming situation, that particular fence installation is not changing. So we believe here the criterion is met. The proposal complies with all the applicable site and design development standards of the code, such as landscaping and parking. Right now, we're not entirely sure if that is occurring, but we feel confident that if you wish to move the application forward, or this portion of the application forward, that we can make that determination, and we feel comfortable. We just need that confirmation. So we believe that is conditionally met. The proposal meets all existing conditions of approval for the site reuse as required by prior land use decisions, and we do not have any outstanding conditions of approval from previous land use actions for this property. So we believe this criterion was met. On the standard variance, on the issue about whether or not it's okay to have a taller fence, so we're not talking about the electrification now, but on the tall, on the height of the actual fence being proposed, we have the following criteria that we have to consider. First being special circumstances, lot size, shape, topography, if building applied to the property. This is an industrial zone property. Normally, when you have fence restrictions and so forth, it's largely done in residential or commercial areas. Industrial property typically has some uniqueness about it where you may want to have that additional protection. The company that occupies it in particular uses this location for supplies, inventory, and equipment storage. Those vehicles require outdoor storage. There's a high level of protection. It doesn't fundamentally change the characteristic of the zoning district by having a taller fence in this area. Particularly when the purpose of the general industrial use is to allow for manufacturing facilities, require outdoor storage. So it's a very common practice that if you're going to have outdoor storage, you should have a right to protect it. We believe the criterion is met here. The variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties of the surrounding neighborhood. This is a very uniquely sighted property. You have the city on the north side as far as the You have the city on the north side as far as the sewer treatment plant. You have the levee kind of on the eastern and southerly sections, and you have another industrial use adjacent to the airports to the west. Really does not provide any problems from a operational standpoint. And by the way, particularly for the airport, even though you have the runway in close proximity, a 10 foot tall fence is really not going to impact aviation or airfield operations. So we think the criterion was met here, too. Excuse me. Again, on the height, the variance authorized will be consistent with general purpose and intention from the provision of which this variance is sought. The applicant's narrative suggests that they're maintaining a high value inventory, putting vehicles and equipment which do require outdoor storage. Typically, again, three and a half feet is the prevailing standard for fence heights in in front yards in the industrial area. That requirement, if you look at other industrial properties in other communities, is really low requirement. And keep in mind, there is an existing seven foot tall fence already on the site, a chain link fence. The applicant is arguing with persuasion, by the way, that the existing fence has not proven to be sufficient in protecting the property from theft. So they're suggesting a higher fence located behind the existing one. Could provide an additional layer of protection for the site. We find that argument convincing, and from the height perspective, we believe that criterion is met. And the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve the practical difficulty with full compliance and to avoid or minimizing the resulting hardship. Again, we find the variance for the higher fence use is reasonable, given the current use and other future uses of the zoning district. Other types of inventory that the business stores outdoors, a higher fence behind the existing seven foot chain link fence does provide that additional layer, an additional wall or barrier, if you will. It will help with theft deterrence. Sincerely believe that, and we believe therefore as a staff that this criterion is met. On the issue, however, of electrifying the fence, this is where staff unfortunately has to differ with the applicant's requests. And when we talk about the differentiation here, again, this is a separate variance request. And in this case, because it's not a dimensional standard, this is considered a special variance. There are different criteria that we have to apply. And this is where we find shortcomings in the in the application. The unique nature of the proposed development is such that the intent and purpose of the regulations and other provisions to be waived will not be violated. While we say that the current land use, meaning the business that exists on the site, complies with the zoning district. It's pretty cut and dry in the development code that electrically charged fences are prohibited within the city limits. The code does not specify zoning districts where electrically charged fences would be permitted. So there are no provisions which would exempt Sturgeon Electric from compliance from this article. It's not like we can potentially allow it in industrial, but then not allow it in commercial based on differences. So the special variance cannot seek to minimize its impact and comply with the code intent of the provision. So we find that this criterion point was not met in this consideration. Moving on to other criterion points, authorization of the special variance would not be materially detrimental to the public welfare and will not be injurious to other properties in the area. Proposal will only apply for a new structure which will be located with behind the existing fence, which we've made that that argument already. Based on the applicant's submitted documents, the electric fence proposed would not be, based on their documentation, would not be injurious to people or animals. The property does back onto the 40 mile loop regional trail system. It is open to the public, and there is wildlife in the area. The applicant did not clarify the wanted of the proposed fence. They may seek to do that so tonight. One of the things we would seek is for clarification on that. If if the commission decides it wishes to actually allow for the electric fencing, that would be a proposed condition of approval. That way, we can prove that it having an electrified fence in that area will not be injurious to the public. So we believe this could be conditioning that. The application of the provision to be waived, in this case, the electrification of it is unreasonable and unwarranted during, due to the specific nature of the proposed development. So again, the development code is pretty cut and dry. No electrically charged or sharp pointed fencing shall be constructed or maintained within city limits. We can sympathize again with the purpose of the application. It's to increase security. They've had a rush of break-ins and it is a problem. The need is reasonable. The request, however, is not unique to this property. The need for additional security can also be identified for other properties as well. Based on the applicant's narrative, they have suggested they've experienced 10 to 15 break-ins in the past 12 months. Options for other security measures may still be available, but they're not reliable. Typically, break-ins are occurring in a pattern within the specific area. But the narrative did not clarify if these instances were targeted to Sturgeon Electric specifically. So we have a hard time coming to terms with that. This provision does not create an undue and excessive hardship for this specific property. It is worth noting that the general surrounding area is experiencing higher levels of theft and crime for the past year. And as such, we do not find that the criteria is met if we're talking about the site specific consideration. Finally, a special variance is not required for a type two design adjustment as provided in section 8.240. Does not require one. You click this criterion is not applicable. So what does this all mean? What it means is that staff has a recommendation of denial on the count of two of the four criteria for the special variance failing to be satisfied as the findings of fact. You as a commission can determine that if, and since staff had not suggested that the other two, that the site development or the regular variance, since we believe that those were approvable. You can choose to approve those two portions of the application and choose to deny the special variance. You can also choose to say thank you, staff, but we we find the applicant's arguments persuasive. We're going to approve the whole thing, and that's fine. If you do wish to approve the whole application, we would request that you add two conditions of approval. That first, they have to obtain an electrical permit, pretty common sense, and second, that they do have to provide evidence that the fence does not pose a significant health hazard or creates significant injury to humans. There's two other things that staff wants to mention before we turn it to any questions that you may have. First, about 12 years ago, there was a case file for a property in the industrial area about two miles west of here where there was a request for electrical fencing. Much like it was back then, staff had had made a recommend recommendation of denial for the electrical fencing component of it, but was okay with the height threshold. So when we came to our decision, we saw that case file, and we basically concur with that position. The planning commission at that time, though, decided it was okay to electrify it, and they moved forth with that. That is entirely within your right. And if you choose to do the same tonight, and we will still sleep well, we're not, you know, we're just making a recommendation based on the decision criteria. We sincerely sympathize with the plight that Sturgeon Electric has to go through. It's not to not be fun to have constant vigilance on your property because of these issues. We feel as a staff, however, that the more appropriate or better route, if you wish to really not create precedent and really address the issue holistically, not just for Sturgeon Electric. We would suggest that you may consider a text amendment to the development code, where maybe you allow for electric fencing in the industrial areas or in other areas of the city where it might be appropriate. But that way, this application doesn't have to try to meet criteria that staff doesn't believe they can obtain because it is not that unique. Other properties have been facing the same problem. And therein lies our issue unfortunately with it. So again, we want to be very clear. We do sympathize with Sturgeon Electric. We are comfortable with the site placement of the fence. We're comfortable with the height of it, but we cannot recommend approval of the electrification. And with that, I'll be happy to yield back and answer any questions.
Okay, questions for staff?
Let me share my screen, sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just a question for the director, so that I'm undeniably clear about the latitude afforded to us as a member of the of the planning commission. Chris, just just to be sure, and again, I'm going to say something, but this is not necessarily a statement that I believe necessarily. It does apply in my in my professional life, but I want to be sure here. So you suggested that at this point, you you recommend no granted variances because of two of the tests are not met.
Not granting of special variance. The other, the the standard variance and the site development review are approvable in our minds.
They are correct. I'm sorry, perfect for the correct. But let me, let me put, let me put in a in a kind of, you call it language. This is because as in my position, when I, when I'm sitting in your chair, you are, and we are bureaucrats. So we cannot, let's say, for lack of better English, disregard the code, the language of the code, the integrity to the code. But you say that the commissioner have the latitude to be what I call a comedian compassion. So make some sort of marketing transactions, for lack of better English. And I agree with your rationale also that there should be a much wider conversation with a text amendment, potentially if we feel that it is value, that treats the the general industrial area in a different way, maybe raises the height from three feet or whatever. I just want to be sure, am I correct in my in my in my assumption here, just?
I think that's fair, Commissioner Mamon. Again, I certainly, we certainly as a staff sympathize with the issue and the desire to want to electrify it. It's just that when we apply that naked standard, it doesn't, in our opinion, pass that standard.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Just just part of my process, mental process. I appreciate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Allen.
So question, it's pretty obvious that the code doesn't allow for electric fence. However, it's obvious that this is not the same Troutdale five years ago. Is it possible to recommend to the city council that they review the code to see how it should be for today?
The city council wouldn't review the code. We would review the code and then make a recommendation to them.
But as far as who who initiates it, like if you wished to consider, you know, maybe allowing for electrical fencing in industrial area or other areas, that can be initiated by this group.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it did.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Stephenson.
All right, Commissioner Wilcox, please.
Yes, I have a question on the couple of fencing paragraphs in the code 5.050. Paragraphs F and G. If you specifically allow barbed wire. And under G, you specifically prohibit electrically charged or sharp pointed fencing. My question is, would razor wire be classified as barbed wire or sharp pointed fencing? I'm not sure what's meant by sharp pointed fencing. Is it, is that more like spikes sticking up in the air?
That's that's would be our interpretation of it. Razor wire, yeah.
So. Not sure you're answering my question clearly. So with under, under which, which paragraph would razor wire fall under F or G?
Can you give me the page or the the section reference again? I'm sorry. Oh, I see it. Okay.
5.050.
Give me one moment, Mr. Wilcox, so I can just double check it.
Sure.
And if you'll permit me, I'll go ahead and share the screen so other commissioners can see what we're looking at here. This is from that section, that chapter five section where we talk barbed wire fencing here. It is allowed, again, for agricultural, community service, commercial or industrial uses. So for instance, the airport, the airport landing field, the the runway, the the tarmac that the grounds has fencing. It is barbed wire fencing in most, probably the entire periphery, certainly in most, most of the areas I've seen. That's a community service use. It it isn't allowed use in that regard. Where where we're have, where the restriction is, is that residential wouldn't be able to have that. Furthermore, if you go to the the a couple of paragraphs up where it does talk about fencing, now, again, fencing and retaining walls on zone lots, zone residential. This is the electric fence requirement, but what it doesn't say, however, it does not say that electrical fencing is permitted much like barbed wire fencing is permitted historically. And then the next paragraph right below, no electrically charged or sharp pointed fencing is is tolerated. So barbed wire, the knots, if you will, would be, but true razor edge type pointed fencing would not be.
But we've allowed it.
I'm sorry?
I believe we've allowed it, correct?
Yeah.
And looked at as an expansion of barbed wire.
Could very well be. That might have been precedent you all set before this current staff was around.
So I guess I would answer that is it would fall under F.
Okay, so Chair, Chair Stephenson, you're saying what's, I I think most of us understand what what razor wire is, and you see it on the top of fences around prisons. So you're Chair Stephenson, you're you're classifying razor wire falling under F. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm I'm pretty sure the storage facility, the self storage, self-service storage facility at the corner of Harlow and Graham have added razor wire to the top of their barbed wire in the last year or two.
Yeah, they have.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that distinction. Thank you.
That is in fact precedent that's been set. And again, if that's the interpretation that's been over the years, staff respects that interpretation. If that's maybe the direction afforded the applicant, that that might help, but I don't believe that was the intention of this application.
Right, right. Okay, any, oh, Commissioner Whitaker.
Just to clarify with staff a little bit. Other businesses in the area are having safety concerns as well. As we allude to, we may want to make a text amendment or at least have that discussion. There are many safety concerns as a whole in this industrial area.
Correct?
Yes. So it's not just limited to them, and they need some sort of way to protect themselves, their property.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
First.
Commissioner Cricket, did you have a question?
And I will just say, I think the problem is bigger than anything that we can solve.
Okay, if there's no other questions for staff, then we will hear from the applicant. Ms. Hopper.
Okay, everyone hear me?
Again.
Excellent. My name is Michael Pate. I'm with Amrock. I reside at 315 South Maple Street in Columbia, South Carolina, as you can see behind me. Sitting in my little house over here on the East Coast.
Thank you for joining us.
Little cold and rainy here today. It's Oregon weather. All right, first of all, I'd like to start off with, thank you for being here and letting us speak, number one. Number two is, is we've done this before in Troutdale. At Maz Toy, which is literally right down the road from the airport. We installed a battery powered alarmed electric security fence. And I believe you folks said in 2009, I didn't realize it was that long ago, because I'm the guy who led the charge at that time. That just shows I've been around a long time. Let me explain to you really quickly exactly how the system works. So basically, what you're looking at is a 12 volt battery, just like the battery in your car or your boat. That's all that charges this. So we're never connected to the electrical infrastructure at all. Keep that battery powered by two things. One would be solar panels. If you have to have a little sun outside, if not, we have a trickle charger which plugs in to keep the battery up and going. So again, all we have is a 12 volt battery that's being charged by either a solar panel or a trickle charger. We take that 12 volts and we amplify it with an energizer to between 7 and 9,000 volts. Miracle of science. It takes 1.3 seconds for that to happen. So during this period, there's nothing on the interior fence line. I'll get back to that a minute. So the fence is basically dead. Once that energizer is full mechanically, it cannot hold any more energy. It must release that energy down the interior fence line back to the alarm panel. That takes three ten thousandths of a second. It's almost immeasurable unless you have a special device called an oscilloscope to measure the quickness of that pulse. You get back to the alarm panel and the alarm panel is trying to measure a nice clean return. If it's under 2,000 volts, the alarm panel starts a countdown. If we get five consecutive negative returns, we'll set the alarm off. And the alarm is audible on the site and also back to our call center over here in South Carolina. We start going through a call list. We're not hooked up directly to the police department. So if Mr. Dambian is number one on my call list, we'll call him at 2:30 in the morning. Chris, guess what? We've got a break. We've got a break on the northern perimeter, 200 feet from the northeast corner. Because we can measure the breaks to a small little space. Let's give it a look. We also have cameras usually associated with these devices. So you can sit there with your Wi-Fi at home, look at that particular fence line. Hey, we just had a big ice storm, took out the big sycamore tree on the corner, knocked down the fence line. Let's button it up and go back to bed. Or I got five guys in a flatbed truck are robbing me blind, please call the local police department. That's called a verified alarm. Police love verified alarms. They know where to go and what to expect. And that's really big for the police department. Now, you know, we've talked here about the break-ins, 10 to 15. Let's go to the low number. Let's say there are 10 break-ins. And we have already have this verified with police reports. So every time there's a break-in, the police have to go there. The police have to investigate. The police have to initiate and write a report. And hopefully they investigate. That costs thousands of dollars every time. So times 10 added up. Not only that, but the break-ins to these properties denigrate the viability of that business. People are afraid to go to work when they keep getting broken into time after time after time again. And people start taking extreme measures. Extreme measures might be having a gun with them. You don't want that to happen. Something bad can happen when that happens. So that's why we come in with the battery powered electric fence, alarmed electric fence. There are a lot of safety measures involved with what we do. So first of all, we're always behind the existing permitted fence, or in this case, it might be illegally non-conforming fence. We're always signed. There's always a sign on there that says caution, 7,000 volts. In English and Spanish, we actually print the signs in 34, 36 languages, depending on where we are. Aramaic, Arcadian, Estonian, Russian. In Houston, I'm in Vietnamese and Chinese. It just depends on the particular location. So everyone knows not to go in and touch the fence, but if you do, you have to be going through the perimeter fence, which means you're criminally trespassing already if you ever touch it. So those are kind of the safeguards and plates. Now going through the presentation of staff, very thorough, no harm to wildlife, obviously. There is a precedent here with Maz Toy, although with your board precedent doesn't matter. I mean, you're looking at each individual location and how that, how that location is affected. And I might add this, that this is actually an unusual location. It's got a nature trail or the trail out there by the, by the river, which I've actually walked down before. And it provides an easy access for someone to come in and out of that property illegally. The airport access roads provide easy in and outs, egress and exit for everybody. Water treatment plant, it's not secure. People can run across that water treatment plant and come right up to it. And there are large open spaces. So there are very easy ways to get in and out of this property criminally. And these folks are suffering. And, you know, they, they need, they really need to have us there to protect their property. Right next door in Portland, we've probably got 45 to 60 installations just in Portland, Oregon. Portland, Oregon has declared us basically an alarm system, which is really what we are. The electric fence may be a component of that, but what we are, what we are really is an alarm. As far as going to a text amendment, we would welcome that. But the issue in front of you right now is the immediate security of this business as it stands now. And if they're not secured, a text amendment is not going to help them. They will be broken into time and time and time again until the text amendment might be passed. Which in my experience can take anywhere from six months to a year. So if you want this business to continue to experience a year's worth of break-ins, I guess that's up to you. But in my mind, you should probably allow them to secure their property and then pursue a text amendment. You know, basically the big thing here is we're an alarm. And we're not going to harm anybody. Everyone's going to be okay. What we do is we stop crime cold, protect the business, protect the area where we are, and protect the city and save money for the police department. We meet all the existing conditions out there. And we're a pulsed electrical device. I mean, it's a lot different than an AC, than a AC device plugged into a wall. And it's really not even covered by the National Electric Code, which I'll go to permitting right now, too. You want to permit us? We love to be permitted. In my mind, you probably shouldn't permit us with an electrical permit. It should be a building permit. You know, no one permits 12 volt batteries. That's why you probably wouldn't want to do it with an electrical permit. I would say building to make sure that whoever does this has engineered plans for the height of the device to make sure that it doesn't come down in a high wind. And the evidence of basically the safety of the device. We operate under the IEC standards, the International Elektrotechnical Commission standard 60335-2-76, which is adopted in Portland, in Eugene, in Medford, in many other cities in Oregon, which basically sets the safety standards for these particular devices. Our manufacturing facility is authorized to manufacture these devices and put a label on them to know, so you will know that they've been tested and labeled to the safety and efficacy to the standard so they're safe for everybody. So they're safe devices. They're not going to harm anybody. Everyone's always going to ask me, hey, Michael, what does it feel like? This is what it feels like. Imagine yourself in your stocking feet, scrubbing your feet across your carpet. You reach out, hit your door handle, bam, you get that 15,000 volt static shock. That is less than what we do. And no one wants to do that. I mean, I don't know a lot of people who scrub their feet across the carpet and continually hit their door handle. It's unpleasant. Your body abhors an electrical shock and people don't want that to happen to them over and over and over again. So a lot of what I do is just scare people. So in a nutshell, that's what we're asking you to do. If you have any questions whatsoever, in any technical nature, I would love to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Allen, please.
So I appreciate the explanation. At first, I didn't understand the electric fence part since it's so easy to defeat. But having it be an alarm as well, that makes sense to me. The second thought I had was on the 10 foot fence, I don't understand that yet because it seems like a lot of entries are through a fence and not over a fence. Can you explain that?
Yes, Mr. Allen, it's very simple. And we try to push everyone down to ground level. So if you have an eight foot fence and an eight foot electric fence, and they're really close together, four to eight inches, the standard says 100 to 200 millimeters. We convert that into Americanisms. So if you're standing on that eight foot, you can just drop inside if the other one's eight feet. If we're up, it's really difficult, even if you're young, athletic, to hurdle yourself over a 10 foot tall fence and land on the ground and not be injured. So just the height of it forces people down to the bottom. And once they're down to the bottom, they see the signs, they're every 10 meters or 30 feet. They see the signs, they realize what they're up against, they go to a softer target. Now, you know, I confess, I'm hardening that target. And the thieves are looking for the easiest target they can find. So they're going to go look someplace else because that's what they are. They're thieves. So if they climb, providing file on that site.
So if they climb to the top of the first fence, it makes it harder for them to just jump over. Okay, so that does make sense. And then the last question was this, the amperage is what I'd be most thoughtful about. Say amperage that's being delivered. Now, I like that it's behind another fence, so it's not so easy to get to. You have to want to do it. But what amperage, do you know, that's being delivered?
Yes, and the amperage is relatively high, but you have to realize what the math is. So if you're looking at the National Electric Code, everything or all the measurements in the National Electric Code are on one second. Our pulse is three ten thousandths of a second. So even though it's high amperage, it's such a, it's such a quick pulse. It can't harm small animals. It can't harm large animals. It can't harm birds, turtles, children, people with pacemakers. The pulse is so quick that it cannot alter anything in your heart, the arrhythmia, or anything like that. So that's what makes it safe is the quickness. Three ten thousandths of a second pulse is what makes it extremely safe.
Well, thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent to the application?
Hi, good evening. This is Michael Lambert. And the regional manager for Surgeon Electric Company. I would just like to say that we have experienced major hardship in the last, really it's been the last year and a half, two years with major break-ins. They, they happen almost on a weekly basis. And that doesn't mean necessarily major theft every time, but that does mean a $400, $500 fence repair bill every time. It does mean that our site is unsecure for a period of days until we can get it repaired. And then on an occasional basis, it does mean, you know, up to $50,000, $60,000 in damages and theft. And those have happened on a numerous basis over the past year. People have breached our building now at this point. It used to be that they would cut the fence on the back of the property and enter the yard and steal wire and tools. And now they have started to break into our shop building that is behind the street. And it's causing even more damage, even more fear with employees. We have employees that are considering leaving work because they have, you know, a lot of our mechanics on site have a lot of their own personal tools. Some $100,000 worth of personal tools on site. They're considering leaving the company, which loses our hardship with finding new employees, them going to other places. We've had to rent space outside of the city of Troutdale as well, because we don't, we can't secure the property. One other item to note is that we have tried to go out and get traditional security. Theft and vandalism is such a rampant now in the area that you cannot find a security guard at this point to come secure the area. So I would appreciate your attention. It will matter. It is a real hardship. We are in a difficult location. I don't necessarily disagree that other companies are in just as difficult a situation, but we would appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Hey, technical thing, Mr. Lambert, could I get your address, please, for the record?
Yes, sir. Do you want my personal address or the work address? I'm sorry.
Your personal, I believe.
Oh, sorry. 16161 Perilla Circle, Lake Oswego, Oregon.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? Any neutral parties wishing to speak this evening? That entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I can that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. All right. This is sad, sorry to say. Evener at this point. And theft is something that's really difficult to deal with. So I guess I'd say I'm sorry. I had one question for the applicant that I did not ask earlier, if you don't mind. Is there any type of alarm system presently on the building?
I don't know that. You'd have to ask Mr. Lambert.
I'm sorry, was there a question there? I missed it.
I'm sorry. Is there any type of alarm system on the building presently?
There is an alarm on the building. It covers doors to the building only.
Okay.
It doesn't cover our fence gates or anything of that nature.
There is not. Okay. Okay, any comments from the commission? We go. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I like that this applicant has this well thought out. And I'm sympathetic to the conditions that they're facing. Like I say, this isn't the trout though five years ago. However, the next applicant that wants to do an electric fence may not be so thoughtful. So it'd be nice to see it get into code as to under what conditions an electric fence would be acceptable versus not acceptable. So that things that are implemented in the future, don't go in a direction that we wouldn't want it to.
Commissioner Whitaker? I'd like you to add your hand up.
Yeah, was the other variants that we had several years back, was that also in industrial?
Yes, it was. It was, yes.
So it would be possible to make a text amendment just for industrial?
Yes, it could be done, yes.
So even if we made an exception this evening, we could later on down the road. And then it would set precedents and encompass all that in to one group, correct?
Yeah. So you're saying if it wasn't approved this evening and you did a text amendment at a later date?
Even if it was approved this evening, the old, where we've made the exception before and now would all be industrial. If we reviewed it later on down the road, it still would all be industrial. And we can make that text amendment for industrial. And it just would encompass what we've already done in the past.
Yeah, you could limit it and basically anything that
Yeah, you you could limit it and and basically anything that was previously approved gets gets grandfathered in into the new standard. So right now, the the one that was approved twelve years ago is perfectly legal and fine, because this body said it was, it it was. If you choose to do it tonight for this property too, yes, it's perfectly legal. So six months from now, if you decide this should apply for all industrial properties. Um, you know, maybe you you have a criteria like Mr. Pate was discussing or something like that and refine it in such a way where it's that type of system. Yeah, then it's fine, and you can limit it to zoning districts or certain areas of the city at your discretion. Uh, ultimately, it's the council's discretion, but that's the type of refinement you can, you can make. So, you know, if you wanted to move forward, if 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 their testimony was compelling enough that you feel like it makes sense for this property, then you want to, uh, address it for the larger area, that could be part of your updated findings. Basically say this is compelling and it should be applied elsewhere, and we recommend we look at this holistically.
And what do the other commissioners think about that? I mean, I'm kind of the junior member here, so.
Uh, Commissioner Whitton, actually, I'm the junior member, but. Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, Commissioner Prickett, please go ahead.
Um, I was on the planning commission when we did the last, uh, conditional use for electric fence and it was for the same reason. Um, they were getting broken into almost on a weekly basis to steal car, car parts in metal. At that time, metal was, uh, going rate for most people that wanted to, um, imbibe in other things other than working. Um, so that was why that one was, uh, conditional used in. But again, I think the criteria was that it wasn't harmful to, uh, wildlife, that was the pre, what we were looking for, that wasn't going to be harmful or dangerous to somebody else or wildlife itself. Um, I think that was the compelling reason why we did it was because there was no other way to protect this business at that time. So, but that was, like you said, a long time ago, and this is not the same Troutdale that it was. But I agree with, um, Mr. Whitten and that we should maybe look at a text amendment change to, uh, allow this in industrial or condition, you know, some way, make it so that they can use it in the industrial area. Cause I have a hunch this is gonna come again.
They're an outright or a condition or something. Rather than a special, yeah, no. Yeah, cause the standard's a lot tougher. Okay, um.
But as Mr. Stephenson said, it's, it's very sad right now that
Right.
It, the situation that they're in, and if I personally feel if we can move something along quicker and not have them wait another few months, then I I would be for that.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I have to tell you, I am kind of leaning a little bit towards, um, staff's finding. Uh, I'm, I'm somewhat agreeing with it. And not that I'm not sympathetic to having your business broken into, because, uh, believe me, I've been there. Um, and it's not, it's not a pleasant situation. I think the, uh, the fence um, is is very doable, I think that passes. I I also think you could cap it razor wire, something of that nature. You know, to, um, help alleviate it. I think we just have other, other issues in the area, and I don't really want to cloud that, but I, I think it's something that we have to address. I, um, I just can't get there with the, um, with A and C. I don't see where we've met those. That's my struggle. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Allen, you had your hand up, sorry about that.
Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, without some kind of a tripwire, uh, such as an alarm or video tripwire, that, uh, a person could easily cut through both fences in a fairly quick order. It's just not that hard. Um, so I'm not sure that razor wire on top would actually do much, cause I would just go through. Um, if I were dishonest.
Okay.
Clarification, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I do like the idea of, uh, if this is approved, uh, that we get into code, what conditions would be acceptable, and that would be a recommendation to council.
All right, um, is that it, sir? Moment, okay, Commissioner Prickett.
Well, and when I was reading this, it said any sharp pointed fencing, is that razor wire like, um, Mr. Commissioner Wilcox said, is that considered razor wire considered sharp pointed fencing?
Was it, I, my understanding was that that is a fencing, that's more the fencing material. But like the, the material of the fence itself isn't sharp pointed. Yeah, so that would be like something that's, you know, a spear shaped. Like a picket that's spear shaped, something of that nature.
Okay.
Material not, not be what is going on.
Yeah, I understand it now.
Mr. Chair. If I may, the, the, my, my simple comment should be that I, I share the sentiment of Commissioner Prickett and Whitton completely. But I I would like just a couple of minutes to to frame this better, because I think this is a real two-step situation, at least in my preferred option, while I concur with some of my colleagues. First of all, I would like to thank and congratulate the staff, uh, because this was a comprehensive, well thought out report, inclusive of their recommendation, even though we potentially, some of us don't agree with, but legally that reached the only conclusion illegally was afforded by a latitude to the language of the code. And so, um, but, well, well done, we, we, we need the, the kind of a, uh, analysis for us to, 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 to ponder the issues. Um, but also we have established before that the planning commission is afforded a different latitude that, that the staff, that, that the administrative staff. And, uh, and so this is my, my opinion that, then that's why I wanted to frame it. So we have a, a sequence of events where to go eventually in front of the, in front of the, the, the city council. This is my opinion is to establish, uh, the opportunity to establish a judicial precedent that correct an unwanted situation. Uh, codes evolves over time, um, in response to either changes circumstances or historical oversights. And we are think presented, this is, um, example number one, uh, about, uh, a posted child of an, an, an changing situation over time in a city that becomes much more complex, much more, uh, dynamic. And unwanted situations are becoming much more common. And so this is an opportunity, of course, as I said before, to establish a judicial precedent, but also to correct, to evolve and improve our code. And as I said before, I concur with Commissioner Whitton, I concur with, with, uh, Commissioner Prickett. This is an issue that extends behind the subject property, and so it demands our attention. And in agreement also with staff, I think this is an opportunity for us to bring this as a, a larger conversation, uh, to recognize that the general industrial area as to, is to be supposed to treated, is supposed to be treated differently than the rest of the, of the city, where a general language that applies indiscriminately to every, um, zoning district is, 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 is out of time, is out of touch with the reality. Should be an opportunity to, um, have a conversation about a text amendment for the general industrial area for the electrical fences and also for the height of the electrical fence in the front yard in specific district like a general industrial. So, concurring with my colleagues, if I understood correctly, I would grant the variance tonight, but also with the fact that there is a second act, um, immediately connected to it, which is a conversation to, uh, dis- discuss the code and bring it up to, uh, to speed, for lack of better English, uh, with, with the, with the needs on today live.
I clearly, um, I'm hearing that, you know, regardless of whatever decision we've made this evening, uh, we will put electric fences on the docket um, for a discussion in our next text amendment section. But I think that's a definite, uh, that's, that's coming out of this. And so, uh, with that, um, I guess I'm looking for any further discussion uh, on the application.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you know, what, one thing to consider, uh, and this is to the benefit of the applicant here tonight, is oftentimes you might need a test case if you're trying to make a larger consideration happen, particularly if it's something different. And it, you know, Pates, obviously, he said he had involvement twelve years ago with that case, that seems to have worked out, okay? We've never really heard, from my understanding, any issues with that. Presumably, ideally, this would be the case here, if you choose to award them the variance, the full, the full application tonight. In a way, they can effectively serve as maybe a litmus test for you in crafting the standards that you'd want to change the code ultimately. And maybe those standards are, you have to have certain types of performance standards like the kind that Mr. Bates products suggest it can do, that you have it tied to an alarm, that it has to demonstrate it can do it. Like these, you, you, you're kind of forming already the standards for what would have to be to make it an allowable installation. You know, if, if, if the, if, based on the conversation tonight, if this current commission has general comfort with eventual outcome or the eventual, eventual desired effect, even if it doesn't specifically tie with the vocational threshold, which is, is this a unique property? No, it's maybe not a unique property, but if you're intending to ultimately change the code or recommend changing the code three, six months from now. Maybe that's part of your, your decision, and we can reword some of the, the criteria or the, the findings, I should say. That's spirit of intent, if you so wish. Whether you choose to vote for it or not, that might not be, that might be a, a different story. But, um, as, as mentioned, even though we made a recommendation of denial, it was not, we're not enthusiastic about it by any stretch of the imagination. We sympathize and we would like a long-term solution. If the desire is to move something forward, both short-term and long-term, that's completely, staff's prepared to do that any which way you want. Sure.
Okay, um, anyone else?
Other than I agree a hundred percent with what Chris was saying, that, like Shirley was saying, you know, taking into effect all the wildlife and everything else. The system that they have is a great system and checks a lot of boxes, and I agree, we could use a lot of that writing the code going forward of what we're looking for, cause it, it does check a lot of boxes.
I, Mr. Wood, I don't disagree with you at all, I just, I just am having trouble seeing how we're meeting a you know, from a technical standpoint.
Aye.
So that's where I would need a little help.
I agree.
As far as, you know, the, you know, like, Commissioner Allen, you mentioned going through the lower part of the fence. And that may be happening today, I don't know, but I would think that some of, someone's going over the fence because we're putting up a ten-foot fence instead of a seven-foot fence. I would think somebody's going over the top. Okay, um. All right, any more discussion?
Chair, just, just for clarification too, if, if there are commissioners intending to make a motion to approve all facets of the application, we do not right now have prepared findings that
Right.
can give you a stance to approve on. If you provide us a five-minute recess, we can draft such findings real quick. I don't think it will take too long for us to, to do that, uh, cause it's really adding just a couple of sentences. Uh, and with apologies, of course, to the applicants who are on the East Coast. Um, but that will be then more legally defensible for us. I don't suspect any party would appeal if you go forward with, with doing the application.
No, actually, I, I thought that whoever moved was going to come up with
Okay.
Their language when they made.
Or they can do that too, but, um, staff's prepared to assist in that, refer to.
Um, was someone planning on moving and stating a finding? Okay.
Chris, sorry for, just to understand better, this will be for the special variance for the electrical fence for the two findings of fact that you have deemed not to meet.
Correct, right, that would be revising, uh, criterion A and C, which
Yep.
All other criterion would be desired an amendment for.
Everything checks until we hit A and C.
Yep. To expedite process, I'm so, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair, Chris, just to understand better, to expedite the process. Are you looking for a technical answer from us, like an administrative one, or you, or you're looking for a quasi judicial vision about, about the solution?
Basically, just if, it, it doesn't have to be too complicated, it can even be just a sentence or two at the end saying, despite these concerns, planning commission has found.
Very well, I, I was hoping so, yeah, cause I didn't want to go in deepest meander of the code and figure out exactly what the time, what language one, thank you.
Is all we're looking for.
Or we still have the option of just approving the two?
Yes.
And then we could go down a text amendment over the next couple of meetings.
Absolutely.
Which Chair Stephenson, I think you would be more comfortable with.
I would, but I, you know, I'm one of the guys.
I.
Do you wish to move?
Mr. Chair, what would be your preferred option here? Because I think, I think we could benefit from yours and Commissioner Prickett's experience about how to handle this very narrow path.
Well, I, I think this is a, these guys have made a, a very good argument. Um, I have a little trouble reaching A and C. So from a technical standpoint, it's, I'm not getting there. Okay, I do think the, um, the heights, um, the site development review, those all check out. I think we could, um, have a work session in the near future and come up with some definite standards for applications for electric fences. You know, uh, on a text amendment, I'm having trouble getting there with what we have in front of us tonight with A and C. Uh, I'm just not, not seeing that piece of it. Um, that's, that's me.
True.
I understand the technical point of this. And why it doesn't meet under the technical issue that you have. But I think the reason we approved the last one was bec- they had the same argument. And yet it was approved then.
Yeah.
So I'm having a hard time roll in this one because the same thing, it was that way then. And yet we still approved it.
Yeah, and we did, and I don't want to go, you know, too far down that trail. The only thing that was a little different with that was, if you remember, they were cutting, they were taking out catalytic converters and they actually took a car or two out.
What? Is that different in your mind if they're taking a whole car versus a pair of shoes? I mean, stealing.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're talking expensive tools and stuff that aren't cheap. I mean, if some of these, some of these, like you said, some of the people that work buy their own tools. And so we're asking them that it's okay, we can put electric fence around a car parts place, but not around it because they took a car and their tools aren't that, the tools are probably worth more than the car they were stolen out of that lot. So I'm having a hard time figuring that one out too, so.
I think you bring up a very good point. I just, if it was me, I probably would have put an alarm system in.
And I'm going to say this, not to say, just to be argumentative here. But the response time right now for if an alarm goes off and there's somebody in there is not, is not like quick. I mean, the police aren't going to get there like in five minutes if an alarm goes off.
Okay.
And they have multiple ways to get away and disappear. So I'm not, I'm not sure an alarm system would do much. I mean, it would detour somewhat. But if they want it bad enough, they're not, the alarm ain't going to mean nothing.
I would like to see what staff could do with A and C.
I think staff looking at it.
But I do agree with you, Tanny, it's a hard one technically.
Yeah.
Yeah, the critical phrase is, because again, staff in a perfect world without decision criteria, staff would be quite sympathetic. We wouldn't even be discussing this tonight.
Right.
Problem are these two phrases, unique nature and specific nature, which is where we struggle to overcome that situation. So I guess the question that we asked ourselves was, what made the sturgeon property unique in this case? And that's, and not to put Mr. Clifford on this, but that's what was also suggested. This is also a situation that affects other industrial properties on the site. That does not discount the wisdom, the need, the performance that
Right.
electrical, the product would do to help surgeon electric downwind. It was just our very narrow reading of the code compelled us to make that. We're obviously at your disposal, folks. So I mean, if you have a vote that directs staff that, I guess, from a sequencing standpoint, Mr. Chair, what you should probably do, because it seems like there would be consensus on the site development review and on the height. You should probably take votes on that. When you get to the point of the special variance, if there's a desire to adopt the findings as written, if there are commissioners who are out there that would like to see a rewrite to consider, then they should probably vote no for the staff findings as written or as presented. Doing so would then direct staff to provide new findings for it. We can do that with a recess, I think, still tonight. And again, apologies to our folks on the East Coast, but we could do that tonight still and have that for consideration for this commission to approve potentially tonight in the other, in the other way. Because that could be a path forward for you all.
Set please, the commission.
May I add something too? I hope my internet is working this time. But as Commissioner Mamoni did mention, as staff, we are bounded in the code in the way that our findings have to reflect the intention of the code. So with the recess, what we will assist you with is the planning commission findings on that, on those two criterions that they are unable, that the applicant is unable to meet. So criterion A is about, you know, of the violation, that it cannot meet the halfway point. It's kind of like, it's completely explicit in the code that it's not allowed within city limits. So when our findings, that there's no argument if you build an electric fence, that's not a halfway point, whereas with the height, there is because it's reasonable to have something higher. So if the planning commission finds that it's not, then we would write something in to show that although the staff founds this, planning commission made a conclusion that doesn't concur with the staff also. So just kind of want to bring that up. So in our findings, we're based on what was submitted by the applicant, but obviously with this hearing, there's new information that is found too. So the staff, us, we can write something and assist you in your finding of those new information that wasn't part of the applicant's narrative initially too.
Mr. Chair, if I may add, come for consideration, this is obviously for my colleagues on the commission, but also for the director. I was wondering because of this latitude afforded to the planning commission, if voiding, I'm going to play on a solid of a definition here. Chris, please play with me around a second. Just use me a second, because it's not really a standard there, but would be voiding the standards, which are very clear, unfortunately, like Commissioner, like Chair Stephenson saying that, and Arini just quoted, there is no ambiguity about the presence or the absence of electrical fencing within the city, but would be a desire from the commission to void this kind of standard, to avoid this language, a judicial overreach. Or then we'll put at this moment for this specific situation, for these specific circumstances, the situation to be adopted. And then, as you suggested, this could be an exhibit A litmus test on which to base, because there is so much good into it. And
I think if I'm understanding you correctly, it voids it for this particular situation because it is a special variance tied to this property.
That is correct.
Doesn't void it in general.
That is absolutely correct. It's just limited within this case. But again, we make a decision in also automatically implicitly, we're recognizing this understanding issue of the code. And as you said before, this is a part of a litmus test, an exhibit A to be presented to the council for amendment, for improvement.
Right.
That to me seems very simple. Maybe if I have only concern to try to sleep at night is, am I overreaching judiciously from a judicial point, but I don't think so. What do you think?
I would suspect you wouldn't be because also you did not receive any opposing testimony tonight.
Yeah.
So, you know, definitely you should have that concern because I suspect if, again, the commission votes to allow this special variance to move forward, staff certainly would not appeal it. That's, that's the discretion of this commission and we respect that. You have no, you have no opposing testimony, both written nor verbal tonight.
But then obviously there is a sense of urgency to present this as a case, as the chair suggested, to present it for changes, you know, to have a comprehensive conversation at our level then presented to the council.
But to be very clear on the calendar, realistically, this matter would not be able to be in front of city council until at least early fall. And that's because of doctor considerations.
Of course.
Schedules, so.
Perfect.
If the testimony from the applicant is compelling enough that you feel action should be warranted tonight, again, that is all. And we can try to write finding that suggests that.
Okay. So thank you very much, Chris. So, Mr. Chair, this, of course, is my dissent. This is my elaboration. I would, it seems to me that create some sort of a compromise with the concern of some of the, of the majority of the committee. So that would be my recommendation, my suggestion.
Okay. We need to take this one, one at a time.
And we need to take it at one. Um, maybe we should just vote on the variance height.
And
and the site, the two that we already, that, check all the boxes.
Right. Let's do those if we can.
So you need a motion that you're waiting for?
Yeah.
I'll try my best here. I'll make a motion to approve LU 00072021 sturgeon electric fence, the findings of fact, site development review and the findings of facts, variance height.
We have to take those one at a time.
Okay.
Really good till you added the
All right.
Development review.
So let's go with the development review.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for case file LU 00072021 for finding a fact, site and development review. Any discussion on the please?
I am unmuting myself. I can go ahead with that. Commissioner Wycher?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoni?
Yes.
Commissioner Brickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes. Okay, that one passes. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the finding of signs of fact for case file number LU 007-2021 sturgeon electric fence variance height as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, with motion in a second for case file LU 0007212021 finding the fact height variant. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Ms. Farrell, please.
Commissioner Wycher?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoni?
Yes.
Commissioner Brickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes. Okay, that one carries. Line along now.
You can seek a recess right now. There's a couple paths. You can seek a recess, you can seek to call a motion to adopt the findings as written, which would mean a yes vote would mean a denial of the special variance, a no vote would mean you are not agreeing to adopt the findings as written. And there, that board directs staff to come up with new findings. So that's really a sequencing matter, but remember, a yes vote means denial, a no vote on that type of motion means telling staff to consider a rewrite.
So we'd be voting on what is in front of us, the findings that we have for the special variance. And if we disagree with the findings, we would vote no.
Correct. And by voting no, that provides the window for staff to rewrite new findings in a recess.
Okay.
Clear as mud, hopefully.
No, that's pretty good.
But that also is relying on a motion and a second. So if there's no, no second, then we're back to square one again.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
All right.
Well, this is hard. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to do it sake of time here. I move that we accept the findings of fact as written under case file LU 007-2021 sturgeon electric fence.
A second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for case file LU 0007-2021 finding a fact, special variance, electric fence. On the motion.
And once again, if you're voting yes, that means a denial of that component of the application. If you're voting no, revisiting the findings.
Okay. Ms. Farrell, please.
Commissioner Wycher?
No.
Commissioner Mamoni?
No.
Commissioner Brickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Four to two. Okay, I mean, it fails, sorry.
It fails, yes.
And so we would then be we would need a recommendation to direct staff to write findings from one of you on the winning side.
Is that a motion you're looking for, Chair?
Yes. Right. You're directing, you'd be directing staff to write findings.
Technically, the motion failed, so it's back to the next, to what's next, the step.
Right.
So I make a motion to have staff rewrite the recommendations for the special variance.
I'll second.
And for A and C only?
Yes.
For A and C only, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, we have a motion and a second to direct staff to write a finding of fact for special variance, criteria A and criteria C. Any discussion on the motion?
Go ahead, read.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Wycher?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoni?
Yes.
Commissioner Brickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Uh, no. I got it. I forgot the last. Okay, with that, we will.
10 minutes should be sufficient.
Okay, we are going to recess for 10 minutes. We'll be back.
The recording will pause on, the Zoom recording will pause. You are welcome to stay on the meeting. Do not leave the meeting because we'll resume the recording here momentarily.
We might not let you back. Okay, so we'll be back at 8:58, everyone. We are back in session. Okay, how we doing there, staff?
All right, Mr. Chair, staff got through and is prepared to present the amended findings for item A and C from the special variance, which we'll pull here on the screen. What staff is doing is we're leaving the original large text that we've provided intact. What we want to do as a demonstration of What staff is doing is we're leaving the original large text that we've provided intact. What we want to do as a demonstration of the conversation tonight. Everything that's in red here below continues it. And as such, what we're seeing is the planning commission finds, however, the public safety situation in this area of the city is such that appropriate installations that have electrical components may be considered. Applicant has provided compelling testimony and further evidence of hardship that demonstrates the product's effectiveness without causing significant injury to humans or wildlife and will intend to reexamine needs for the code provision in other areas of the city within the next six months from the date of the hearing. So it's also a promissory that suggests, hey, we recognize that this is a situation not just unique to this property, we're going to do something about, or at least have a discussion on it. Even though council's the ultimate decision maker of that, but that demonstrates long range intent as well as short term understanding based on compelling testimony. So, and then we strike the word not from here. So it would say, as such, the criterion is met. On the, that was, I'm sorry, that was for item C, for, for item A up ahead. So I did that backwards. My apologies. For item A, on the unique nature and the regulations and provisions will not be violated. The planning commission, however, finds in this particular situation, it is not a violation and that further consideration is needed for this property. The code predominantly calls for development standards that improve the public health and safety and welfare of the community. So again, we'll go back to the large macro idea of why do we have development codes to begin with in the first place? It's for public health, safety and welfare. The applicant, the property owner has a right to secure and operate their property for the intended use and should be afforded reasonable avenues and products to do so. The applicant has provided compelling testimony and further evidence of hardship that suggests this solution will accomplish a higher threshold of protection without creating problems for the health, safety and welfare of the surrounding properties. As a result, this criterion is met. So that is the current written proposal. It is certainly up for editing by any member of this commission as, as seen fit. That is our best effort in 10 minutes' time.
All right.
And I'll stop screen share, but we can go back to the, the wording here. So you can see hands.
Okay. I don't see any hands up. All right. How you guys feel about your new? Yes.
I think it was well written. Thank you, Chris. You did a wonderful, I mean, I could not, there are no way I could write it that.
Well, and thank Ms., thank Ms. Farrell too. She had a.
Oh, yes, you too, Arina.
So I was just a, added a few words per cent. So thanks, Chris, for writing the majority of it.
Critical words, that's.
You complement each other.
Thanks.
What do you guys want to do with this?
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the finding of that facts for special variance for electric fence for file number LU zero zero seven dash two zero two one Sturgeon Electric Fence as amended by staff.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve finding of fact, special variance, electric fence. conditions of approval as amended by staff. LU zero 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 seven dash two zero two one. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Ms. Farrell, please.
Commissioner Wycher?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramoni?
Yes.
Commissioner Brickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Saffinson?
No. That passes. Four to two.
And for the applicants, we'll be in touch, staff will be in touch with you. We'll get you an updated
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Okay.
I think, Ms. Hurford, are you trying to say something?
You're muted. Thought she was going to say something. There she goes.
Sorry about that. Thanks for all your help, you guys.
You bet. Thank you for your patience.
Have a good one.
Okay, two. Okay, rolling along, now have case file seven one dash zero one Housing Needs Analysis Adoption. This is a type four application and a recommendation for the planning commission regarding data in the housing needs analysis.
It is, are you ready to?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to open this one.
You do, I'm sorry. You don't have to read through the whole preliminaries, but you do need to.
All right. So with that, we are going to open case file seven one dash zero one. Housing Needs Analysis Data Adoption.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Chair. And for the benefit, obviously, that last item was relatively long. Even though this is a type four application, this is familiar for those of you who have been on the commission a little bit. This should, should be a familiar document. It was also a document that was tabled from two weeks ago, so this was included in your, your staff packet. This is what we call the Housing Needs Analysis, which is a a report that is largely driven by state requirements. The state has land use goals, of which one of them is called goal ten, it's a housing goal. And it compels each jurisdiction to develop a housing needs analysis and a updated report on how the city is impending to meet its obligations to develop housing in the community. When we started this housing needs analysis several years ago, it was done with anticipation that the state was going to require cities, if they haven't done it in a long time, to update these analyses reports. And state law now will mandate that communities will have to do this every six to seven years beginning this year. What Troutdale was trying to do was basically get ahead of this mandate, have a updated plan, updated housing needs analysis so that the city would not have an obligation to update its H and A until 2027. And that was we worked with a consultant, Eco Northwest, a pretty well respected firm who does these types of projects from a variety of cities around the country. During that, that work began in 2019. The better part of the year to get through, the planning commission at the time added a few members, created a de facto housing committee that helped steer the housing needs analysis. We put a bow on it at the end of 2019 into 2020, had a few refinements, then brought it to city council for a resolution to make it a formal document. In late fall last year, the state informed us that we needed to have adopted it by ordinance and not by resolution. So what is before you tonight is the document effectively as presented, effectively this time last year as a resolution, only it's coming before you as an ordinance and in addition to an ordinance as a change to the comprehensive plan. What the city will intend to do is to make our comprehensive plan include or embed the housing need analysis report within the comp plan. This is a pretty typical approach that a lot of cities do rather than try to rewrite everything. It does not, this action tonight does not fundamentally change anything that is contained within the report itself. The report, again, if it was good enough last year and it still holds muster, it can be, again, approved, be approved locally for the same reasons this year. What we do have to do, however, is we do, since we're adding it to the comprehensive plan, we have to, much like we just did with the last case, we have to go through decision criteria to get us there and make, make it formal. So it's an actual land use application now, not just a resolution that planning commission adopted. So I'm going to just share my screen. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I am here, the staff report, somebody had a dog. I am going to share this, the, the screen here real quick, reading from the staff report, so you can see those findings and anybody else following at home. See that as well. One moment. And again, the staff report began with, with this right here, provided kind of just the topic and the discussion that I just provided. Again, it contained an attachment which showed the proposed changes to the actual comp plan text and then attachment B, which was the larger document, is the actual report itself. When we look at the approval criteria that we have to do when we talk about a comprehensive plan amendment, we have the following criteria. Is the change that we're proposing, does it have compliance with the statewide land use goals and related administrative rules? Have they in fact been met? We've submitted the proposed amendments to the Department of State, Department of Land Conservation and Development to determine compliance. Thus far, they have not provided us any correspondence back saying, you haven't. And in the absence of that, generally, we believe we have done that. I think, Ms. Brickett, if you don't mind me reading yourself, thank you. The, the housing needs analysis itself, when, when, why we commissioned Eco Northwest is they have great familiarity with the state rules and the, what we call Oregon administrative rules and Oregon revised statutes. The report itself has done the diligence to ensure that there was compliance with those standards and has called it out and such. So that middle paragraph there suggests that we have accomplished what we needed to do as the state suggests that we need to do. The report also highlighted recent and prospective development, which furthers demonstrates the city's commitment to accommodate required housing. In short, the city was effectively required to add 720 new residential housing units in a 20-year period going to 2040. To date, and we're only into midway through 2021, we're already on our way to accomplish well over half of that. So we are with full intent and, and with a straight face actively pursuing that well in advance of our required mandate time. So we believe we've met the criterion as far as adhering to state standards. Second one is the public need is best satisfied by this particular change. We needed to have updated data. The housing and development situation in this community has changed significantly in the past 10 years since the last time we really went through this type of exercise. Unlike a lot of the other suburban communities in our region, we do not actually have what we call urban reserves, areas that are outside of our city limits or beyond what we call the urban growth boundary to annex new lands. So it is a unique situation where we don't have that type of situation, unlike, say, Gresham or Hillsborough, Wilsonville, these types of communities. So as a result, we have to be very intelligent with the remaining buildable lands that we have. It is a finite resource. And it is in the public interest to help us determine what is appropriate, at what scale, what location. And the housing needs analysis can help guide decision making that your body in particular often will have to consider when evaluating a subdivision proposal or maybe a variance request for certain things. You typically wouldn't have to, unless it's a zoning change, have to come across these situations for non-subdivision situations. But when you're making your decisions, you now have a more up to date document that you can refer back to and says, yes, this meets our housing needs analysis, or no, it doesn't. And you can make a better and more informed and a more legally defensible such decision on that. So we believe here it is in the public interest to have this updated document. We believe the criterion was met. The change has not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the community. Again, Troutdale has historically been a predominantly residential community. Available buildable lands are highlighted in the report. They are minimally impacted by potential negative effects. We have a good division of where our industrial uses are, the line between commerce, residential areas. We are very fortunate in that regard that we have that. There are some more impactful properties that are in our so-called buildable lands areas, which are closer to commercial patterns. You may suggest in those cases that they may have higher densities, it could have more efficiencies to be closer to things where maybe you would have reduced vehicle types. And in other areas, we have environmental constraints where you don't want to have that level of intense development. So having a report like this also understanding the importance of addressing affordable housing and figuring out how to best plan for that, which by the way, is also required by state law. We have to do that. Having this document in place helps the city make better decisions. So we feel this criterion here is met and met with the standards that we need to do. So those are effectively the three decision criteria that we have to do. Our recommendation to you would be to review the attachments if you haven't already. Consider any testimony, which there is a written testimony we'll present to you in just a moment. We recommend approval for you to recommend approval to city council. So city council will be taking this up if all, it goes according to plan and schedule on June 9th and June 22nd. We do have a pretty hard deadline to get this done by June 30th in order to make sure we hit the state deadline. So that way, we do not have to do this exercise again for another six to seven years downwind. Again, we had thought we had done it correctly. We thought we had adopted it officially. The state, again, is telling us you have to adopt it by ordinance, which is why we're here tonight. Before I get to that testimony, which is of interest to you, is there any questions you folks have on what we're doing tonight and why we're?
Okay, questions for staff? Does this drive any zoning changes to any properties?
Does it drive any zoning changes? No, only if, only if development or does property owners desire zoning change, it can be used to evaluate it, but it cannot compel it.
Okay.
But it can be used to defend a decision as to why you would allow for or deny a zoning change.
Okay, so would we be recommending any changes? No, we're not driving any, we're not recommending any.
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, no questions for staff? Okay.
So there is a consideration that you may want to weigh before you take action tonight. The city did receive testimony and I will pull it up here in a moment for, from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. Now, I want to remind you before you, you read through it and we'll, we'll share it on the screen. The city also informed the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And usually if there is a concern or a situation about how the city has approached its staff report or its findings, usually DLCD will be the one who throws the flag. Occasionally, there will be interest groups or interested parties that will also review these and from time to time, they themselves throw flags. For instance, Thousand Friends of Oregon has requested this document as well. And Gianpaolo is already nodding his head. He's smiling because he knows they have not commented on it, but the Fair Housing Council has, and it is worth your consideration because they are suggesting you delay for just a moment. And so I'll pull that, that correspondence up. Just one moment here. Can everyone see this? It should have a letterhead from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon on the top?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Let me zoom in just a little bit more so you all can read it.
Didn't know they cared about us.
The critical paragraph there, the staff report for this file does not include findings for statewide planning goal ten describing the effects of the amendments on the city. That's the, the concerning factor is, in their estimation, the findings that we prepared for you tonight do not go far enough in fully satisfying what in their mind is, is a full addressing of the goal ten amendments. do not go far enough in fully satisfying what in their mind is as a full addressing of the goal 10 amendments. In other words, they want extra mustard on the finding. So the 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 question, I guess, for this commission tonight is do you wish to move forward? And again, you're not making the decision tonight. That is ultimately city council. Do you wish to move forward with adopting or recommending this this document with the findings that's written? Do you wish to continue this hearing two weeks from now? And staff try to engage with Fair Housing Council, which we've tried and have not been able to engage with quite yet. Just not being able to meet with them to figure out what their suggestions are and come back to you with amended findings that may address the concern. Or do you want to? You know, or is there another opportunity or option for out there? We will go with whichever way you want to go.
Chris, if I may, just two questions to understand better. The document it just shows us us being vetted by the city attorney office yet or not?
You mean, has the staff report itself and?
Correct. The one we are requested to approve for recommendation for council has been better, but it's the attorney. You say it's lack master because of a goal 10, lack of a goal 10. As the city attorney make a statement about it or not yet?
As of yet, no. The city council, the city attorney reviews it when it gets to the city council.
Sure, sure. And the second point that you started to voice before the timing about by which we had to face a sense of urgency, because I must imagine to be saved, the the council might go through two readings of the ordinance to separate. They might potentially combine some jurisdictional for that, but probably not. So what is the timeline for us to to have a sense of urgency, but still feel comfortable? We have afforded time to review this document.
I mean, even keeping in mind, obviously, two weeks from now, you you have a follow up of the contentious hearing that you had two weeks ago. You're you're going to have business that night. So you wouldn't have, if you wanted to continue this discussion and get maybe beefed up findings for your own consideration. A long evening again, forewarning you.
Okay.
But you also have these, I guess you could call it security blanket, if you trust council with all respect to Councilor Glance who's on the call. If you trust council to consider that testimony and comfortable with amending findings at that level, that's your right too. In the meantime, we can get a a city attorney opinion to see what he letter and we can report back.
So you said this too correctly for statement. We could approve staff recommendation for the city council and just bring it to that.
You you could do that. You could prove it tonight and and send it on its way. Have another meeting in between the first council meeting if you wanted to, and it doesn't disrupt the approval schedule.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I guess my preference would be to do a continuance. I will say I'm struggling a little bit with the letter because we are right now meeting that quota. Although there's there's an affordability issue, I don't I don't deny that. We are meeting the quota with what we are doing presently. And so I'm kind of taken back a little bit by somebody saying that we're not doing what we are required to do.
Well, again, to be clear, the one they're they're not questioning necessarily the content of the report, but the, I guess you could say the quality of our of our finding. Have we have we fully explained ourselves on how we're meeting the the state mandate or the state goal? Basically, they they think we might have been too too brief with that. We haven't fully demonstrated that.
Well, the bottom line, I guess, is we got 720 units to deal with. Some of those have already been permitted.
Yeah.
And we have a larger shortage on high end housing than we do on lower end housing. So if we were going to take the 720 and divide it up based on that data, it would look different.
I mean, again, the reason we're bringing it up is because they have provided testimony, the this group has appeal rights. So if you wanted to, you know, still press on, and if they were so agreed by ultimately council's decision to press on, they have a right to appeal, which could tie up the city for a little while. And because it's a type four application, you run the risk of it going to Luba. You may have a calculated balance. Would would the Fair Housing Council really take Troutdale to task at Luba over that? Maybe not, probably not. I'm not an attorney though, and we can certainly get a legal opinion on it if you Mr. Stafford said, if you said, if you want to continue it, we can try to get Ed Trumpki's reading on that. He's our city attorney.
My preference would be to continue. I guess what I've looked at is I've looked at some other cities in the metropolitan area, and I've looked at their their statistics and their shortfall, and they are in. If you're going to go after somebody, let's start going after some somebody who's really doing something that's worth going after. I'll just leave it at that.
And to be clear, the the Fair Housing Council is is not here tonight to embellish on that on their testimony, not that that should dissuade you one way or the other. I mean, they did provide testimony, so it is a fair thing to consider.
Their testimony?
Yeah, they they provided it, so they have an appeal right.
Right. I don't question that.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just a question for you. So so you would prefer this commission continue the conversation at the next meeting? What would be the focus that you suggested the conversation? What what is when you file mid resolution?
You know, I'd like to study some more data myself. Because I believe personally, I believe that we've made substantial compliance, not compliance, but substantial compliance.
Performance. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I I believe our, what we have done as far as new construction, what we have permitted, what we have zoned, I think we're meeting it. And so I I frankly, I kind of challenge this. And so I want to get some more data, so I have a better understanding of where we are and where others are. Because this is a very complex issue. And I I have a feeling of how the city council, what their position is, and I want to make sure that I give them as much information as I can. So they can make the best decision that they can. And I think they frankly, I think they expect that of us. And so I would just like to continue the hearing so that we can do it correctly.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That would just require a motion to continue the hearing.
Yeah. So I guess what would date certainty?
May would be May 26th, two weeks from today.
Okay, so at this time, if it pleases everyone, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing until May 26th. On case file 71-01.
Okay, motion, Mr. Chair, motion to continue case file number 7101, housing needs analysis adoption to be continued on May 26th, 2021.
My second. Okay. I think he got you fairly barely.
Yeah, he did.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on case file 7101 until date certain of May 26, 2021. All those in favor, are we have to vote on? Oh, you have a question on the, you have a question on the motion? Mr. Mamon, did you have a question on the motion?
No, I just voted yes. I'm sorry, I probably jumped the guns, but.
Ms. Farrell, could you call the roll, please?
Yep, Commissioner Richard?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamon?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Saffitson?
Yes. Okay, so that is continued. All right, and so blistering right along here. You're up again.
For the staff report, I'm going to ask Ms. Farrell to lead it tonight, because she has news that she'd like to share.
Hi. I have to let you guys know that I've accepted a position in Multnomah County's emergency management office, so I'll be resigning from this position by the end of the month. I I'm really sorry to leave you guys. I really enjoy my time getting to know all of you and how much, how committed you are in Troutdale and even as a planner myself, I learned a lot from your experience working in planning commission. And it made me kind of sad, Shirley, when you said how Chris and I complimented each other because we do have a good working relationship, so kind of bummed about that, but it's been kind of one of my career to go into emergency management. So when that position opened up, I was kind of excited to apply for it and I'll still be in the county. It's just in a different position and I hope I hope it's not within my capacity I run into you guys, because that means something bad has happened. But I hope that in doing other work, I will run into you guys in preparedness on that instead. But thanks so much for everything and I'm sad to go and I thank you again.
Arini, you have been wonderful and congratulations on your new position. You will do it. You're going to do an amazing job. We need someone like you in emergency management. You'll be the force of reason.
I'm assured. Thank you.
Arini, I'm very happy for you. I think I echo what Commissioner Prickett said. I think you'll do a fantastic job. I still have to kind of ban you a traitor because you're going to work for the county. But you've been outstanding to work with and you are going to be missed and those are some really big shoes that are going to have to be filled.
Thank you. It really means a lot hearing from you guys.
Great job. And if you want to change your mind, I'm sure we can work something out.
Yeah, yeah, it's been.
She can always come sit in on a planning commission meeting anytime she wants. You'd like to see.
Yes, I'll sit in.
You know.
We do, I mean, with with Councilor Glance here, I mean, we have an alumni association kind of, right?
All right, anyone else? Oh. You want to say something there, Councilor Glance?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, was Glenn White ever on planning?
And I don't think so. He was on CAC.
Yeah.
Okay, that would have been a full alumni. Yeah, really, it's it's actually, you know, with Zoom, pretty cool to be able to just kind of listen in. Congrats.
Thank you.
Yeah, really, really have enjoyed working with you and your professionalism, but you know that as well. Our opportunity to share the news, no easy way to segue that, just a couple of other brief notes, and I know it's getting late. Your next meeting obviously is two weeks from now, as you just voted on on the 26th. Again, it's a continuation of two hearings, the T-Mobile cell tower that you heard two weeks ago, as well as the continuation of of the housing need analysis goal 10 amendment. The packets, we will send out the the correspondence that we received from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. We will also send out any additional correspondence we receive from the applicants from T-Mobile as far as any additional information they may be able to provide on that. Unless there is a absolute need to have the packet or the full packet redone, we can certainly request that. People have your documentation from tonight's meeting as well as this one, that just saves a little bit of time for staff to compile. Obviously, you would have the digital format completely available with all the original content as well. But if anybody wants a full paper packet with everything back in it, this is. Into June, you will also have a busy June, fortunately or unfortunately, but there's a lot of interesting projects. You will also have hearings on June 9th, two type four hearings on June 9th. And you will have a hearing as well currently scheduled for the 23rd. So please be sure to save those dates. That's the second and the fourth Wednesdays of June. We will try to limit July just to one meeting and and reduce that. In other news, the city and the three cities, Troutdale, Wood Village and Fairview, you may recall, received a a DOT ODOT grant for work for Paulson Street. This is to look at the road profile design of Paulson Street. This was awarded about six to eight months ago. ODOT is now released a mini RFP of quest for proposals for consultants to bid on this project. It is a component of the Main Streets and Halsey project. This board will, this committee will receive updates periodically throughout that effort. This will be one that also is a component of the town center plan, which was adopted last night. That's my next item, but this will be one where we look at the road design and a particular importance of the road design through the Edgefield campus where right now it is just a two lane road. There are some long term desires for improving mobility, particularly bike and pet safety through Edgefield. So that'll be one that will require your input when the time comes. Also of note, as just briefly mentioned, the town center plan, which this group has looked at before back in December, was approved by council last night. And we thank your efforts as well as council efforts as well for getting the document right. That has a significant milestone for us. There's probably much more to share, but at this time, we'll defer back to Mr. Chair and we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Whitton, anything? Commissioner Allen?
So I changed location. Hopefully that helps with interference from my servers and makes for a better meeting.
Immensely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Mamon?
Uh, no, thank you. No comments. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, I just have one thing to mention regarding the T-Mobile here, cell tower hearing on the 26th. The I found the minutes for the original installation of that in 2008. The planning commission meeting minutes are available if anyone's interested. That's all I have. Thanks.
Those will be coming out. Okay, because that does have bearing. All right, thank you. Commissioner Prickett?
One thing, do whatever happened to that variance for the second building for that house over in office? I want to say sweet ride, but it's not. Where he had, it was too tall and too big.
Off of viewpoint.
Yeah, off of viewpoint, that's it. Has that been settled or is it?
It's it's working its way through. They they have done the requisite items that we needed for them to do, and we do not believe they need to return to this body to resolve the issue.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
I will say I drive that on a regular basis and it does not appear that they've done any further construction since you red tagged them. Okay. I just want to echo a little bit what Chris said. The town center plan passed. The council did make some edits to it. I just want to echo a little bit what Chris said. The town center plan passed. The council did make some edits to it. A little surprising, but also really good because it was 190-page document and they actually read it. It was, it was kind of, I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean, they really made some, there were some technical things that they looked at and they decided they wanted to change. And it was kind of impressive because they're a little more. So that was good and I think that's it. It's all I've got.
I think councillor Glance had her hand up.
Yes, councillor Glance.
Oh no, I was just, when Paul was saying something about the original minutes, I think that was actually like my very first planning commission. And I'm curious if I was just in the audience or if I was actually on planning commission for that. I'll do that separately.
Put you anywhere you want. All right. Thank you, everyone. This was a lot of lifting tonight. And the next meeting should be interesting because we've got a couple of type fours. And so you're leaving us with cases unsolved, Arini.
Hey, that was, I tried to write as my staff report to recommend whatever you guys choose. Okay? I didn't leave things so ambiguous. So it's not on me.
It'll be a, a good meeting. Be ready to go for that one and Arini, best of luck to you. And with that, motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion to second to adjourn the meeting of May 12th. All those in favor signify with an aye?
Aye.
Oh, okay. We are adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good evening.
Thank you.